Call this regular meeting of the Southwest Looking Board of Education to order. It is Thursday, March the 19th. We're in the Board of Education meeting room. We'd like to welcome all of our visitors, both here, actually no visitors here, and we appreciate that immensely, and online. Just, I would like to just take just a minute to say a giant thank you to the staff, Dr. Perkins, and the staff of the Southwest Looking School Board, uh, School District for the amazing work that they've done over the last few days. What they've had to do has been something that we can't ever have expected, and what they did and what they're having to continue to do has been truly extraordinary, and we really appreciate everything you've done. If you'd like to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zani.
Here.
Mrs. Engel.
Here. We have a quorum, we can continue. We need an adoption of the agenda, please. Motion to adopt the agenda is published.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. Right, motion passes, we can continue. Uh, we do have a option for request to speak, Teamsters Local 413, Southwest Looking Education Association. Absolutely, and, and if this would continue, we have been, I believe, notified by, or we have, there's been some publications by the Attorney General that at some point we can take teleconferencing for any of those items, correct, Mr. Jones? So, if that, if this continues and that needs to happen, we would most certainly work with organizations for that to happen. So, item number three, approval of minutes.
Motion approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. Passes. Financial report, get a motion to approve the financial report, then we can have discussion. So, move.
Second.
Mr. Jones.
We have the executive summary for the month ended February 29th. For the routine month, we did not receive any property tax advances. Now, since we're really due to timing, I forgot to send in this resolution the board approved, and they won't give it to us until we do that. So, I did that, we've actually got this, in March, we got the advances, they even got the final settlement, so, I still expect to receive at least what we asked to anticipate it, so, other than that, there's really nothing out of ordinary for the month, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
I don't know if this is the place for this, but obviously, we have an election that got delayed. What are the, obviously, we're not going to know things until middle of June at this point?
I don't know what the dates will be, because there's lawsuits, because their Secretary of State Governor cannot sign election dates, so,
Gotcha, okay.
Based on what the Governor and Secretary of State want with June 2nd, which does have some ramifications, one being, again, probably the biggest issue is if it doesn't pass, and we went to about budget cuts, the board has to take action on renewing contracts by June 1st. So, we're going to have, we won't know, so, if we go ahead and move forward, and we don't want to make, we want to make, if it doesn't pass, hopefully will in June, then we can still go through the RIF route to eliminate those contracts. But, you know, obviously, it'd been a little easier to say, we could have reduced it, but, so now, we have to do the RIF route. So, basically, that's one really big, and the other, the other really clarification for KCI is negotiations.
Right.
They talk about, you know, we can try to roll a contract over for a year, we can start negotiating language until we know what the RLEV does. That's one thing we gotta talk about, how we're gonna handle that, but right now, it's kind of been with the coronavirus that's on hold anyway.
Okay.
So, those are probably the two biggest things right now, and I, you know, that's a So, you received email from the gentleman at Channel 10, and I said, basically, you know, even not knowing that board could still take action, I believe we could still take action if we wanted to make cuts before beginning school year, it'd just be a lot faster discussions of moving that, but it still gives us time with the RIF language, because 8% of our budget is staffing, so if you're gonna make significant cuts, it really has to be through staffing, it's not gonna be, 10% of the budget might save us $100,000, but it's not gonna be what we need to make up 4.5 million dollars, or 2.26 for the first year. So, you know, basically, that's gonna delay those conversations a little bit, but, I'm kinda hoping that through lawsuits, it gets moved back some, you know, to, I saw some, say, the end of April.
That's okay.
Okay.
So, I just don't know what the legislature is going to decide when to do it, but again, it could get to that point, coronavirus could still just be just as worse, and another certification, and it could loop again, so it's, it's a little disappointing, but, you know, honestly, we understand why they did it. If it helps, you know, that's two big things right now, is what we're gonna do, if we make cuts, and then negotiations. Can you think of anything else, Casey?
No, just out, I was gonna share this later, but the mediators have all been suspended for non-significant cases, so even if we wanted to try to get together, sitting far apart, we don't have our mediator, and since we're doing that at the end of this time, that's kind of a chill piece.
And, I think with the way, I think with the way things are, we don't want you all to get trying to move you to not get together at this point in time.
I think we'll have to see what happens, like what, like how long we are out for, if that kind of make new plans?
Do you wanna hold it, because it's part of the Nutt Mountain Public, it is streaming live, so, we have the issue of streaming, is the volume going through, or just?
Well, I don't see it on the page at all, so I'm trying to figure out, like, if some, I think the school's already put it on the top of the website, it's messing with the embedded frame. I, I, we're streaming, you know, I'm connected, I'm showing them streaming through their server, so.
Hey, what do you have uploaded right now?
Yeah, I'm obviously, I have that recording active too, so, well, after
Recording, we upload after.
The most likely embedded player is not on the webpage, so, I don't know why, unfortunately, accidentally deleted my login to our website, I don't remember what she made it, it saved on my desktop in my office. I guess it's a password, I already blocked myself out of that device.
So, I think we can move it, because we, it will be recorded, and we will, we will post it up on YouTube, so, I think we're probably okay.
My apologies, I'm working on the streaming issue right now, if I can get it fixed, I'll let you know.
I think we're okay, because it's also, yeah, the record of the meeting should be fine, it's recorded.
It's on, it's recorded, okay.
Yeah, it's also recorded, we should be just fine. So, that's everything with the finances.
Questions? Anyone? Any other questions?
Are these supplies that we're using, are they costing us a lot more, or are they expensive, or?
Which ones were?
Well, the cleaning, or we're not really, I guess, school's not there, so we're not really doing much of that, are we?
No, it's pretty much all.
And they're not gonna go bad, I mean, they're the cleaning supplies.
Oh, I know, I'm just, I would just, that just came to mind, I wonder.
Maybe a little bit more paper with the upgrades, can you?
Oh, you mean that kind of supplies?
It could be chemical, or, hey guys, I'd say, I think
Well, the chemicals, I understood we were using a special chemical at one time.
I don't think we've got anything special that I'm aware of, so, normal cleaning supplies. Again, now, though it's closed down, there's no way there, so I'm using it more.
Well, I'm thinking about when the buildings close down, I know last year, we had some issues with some Ford-legged friends. Do we have any of those issues now, and can we, can we think about if we do, setting stuff up?
I mean, I haven't heard anything yet, Kevin's shocked, I can make sure.
Call this regular meeting of the Southwest Looking Board of Education to order, it is
Waterly shocker in the middle school today, so just going, you know, in daily, making sure that there's no problems, heating, cooling, water.
Okay.
So, you know, I think if we are out extended beyond these three weeks, we're gonna have to revisit some plans.
Okay.
How about gas for the buses? We're saving on that.
Yeah, we are, so, yeah, delivering a little bit of stuff, I saw, but yeah, we used to have plane gas and then tanks, and it was, toss an email, maybe like 5,000 gallons of diesel in the end, and then gas. So, I think we're okay there, if we need it, when we get back, moving buses again.
Have we purchased those three buses yet?
No, we have not, okay. I have more of the conversation about the bond issue under.
And, I know I should, I know I should know this, but I'm assuming everyone is being paid right this minute.
Correct.
But, if this would, God forbid, go to the end of the school year, and then the Governor says, or if he says, well, we're gonna, these are all what-ifs, I know, but if he says, we're gonna cancel school to the end of the school year, and then gonna put you back in school in June or July, I mean, is that something you, is that something you think he's?
I would think not.
Not. If he cancels, he cancels, you think, right? I mean, it's not something where we're gonna have to make up extra to bring teachers back that time, right?
I think he'll just tell us we have to continue educating from home.
From home, okay, perfect.
That's what I would anticipate, he'll just have to stay in course, but.
Yeah, but I thought, if they did come in in June, July, with a teacher home without, I'm sure we'd probably have to pay them extra.
No, that's what I'm, exactly, that's what I'm wondering.
Get paid now for the workdays that come in.
Exactly.
Probably would expect additional.
No, 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 exactly, that's what I'm, that's been my concern, is if they, if he's, if he says, okay, we didn't do school, so now come back and do, you know.
I can't imagine that.
Okay.
The implications of that.
School year, and then the Governor says.
Yeah, I can't imagine that.
Okay, or if he says, well, we're gonna, these are all what-ifs, I know, but if he says, we're gonna cancel school to the end of the school year, and then gonna put you Exactly. No, 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 exactly, that's what I'm, that's been my concern, is if they, if he's, if he says, okay, we didn't do school, so now come back and do.
If it's streaming, they can't, they watch on a chat.
Okay. School year, and then the Governor says. Okay, or if he says, well, we're gonna, these are all what-ifs, I know, but if he says, we're gonna cancel school to the end of the school year, and then gonna
Yeah, if we're running in the
Exactly.
Just letting people know that if they
No, 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 exactly, that's what I'm, that's been my concern, is
In that's with
If he's, oh, if he says, okay, we didn't do school, so now come back and do.
If it's streaming, they can't, they watch on a chat.
Okay, just school year, and then the Governor says. Any other questions? Or if he says, well, we're gonna, these are all what-ifs, I know, but if he says, we're gonna cancel school to the end of the school year, and then
Yeah, if we're running in the
Exactly.
Just letting people know that if they
No, 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 exactly, that's what I'm, that's been my concern, is
In that's with
Yes. If he says, okay, we didn't do school, so now come back and do. Item 5A U H, okay, just school year, and then the Governor says.
Second.
Any other questions? Or if he says, well, we're gonna, these are all what-ifs, I know, but if he says, we're gonna cancel school to the end of the school year, and then
Yeah, if we're running in the
Exactly.
Just letting people know that if they
No, 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 exactly, that's what I'm, that's been my concern, is
I moved 5K through
If he says, okay, we didn't do school, so now come back and do. Item 5A U H, okay, just school year, and then the Governor says.
Second.
Any other questions? Or if he says, well, we're gonna, these are all what-ifs, I know, but if he says, we're gonna cancel school to the end of the school year, and then
Yeah, if we're running in the
Exactly. No, 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 exactly, that's why I'm, that's been my concern, is If he says, okay, we didn't do school, so now come back and do. Item 5A U H, okay, just five, and then the Governor says.
Second.
Any other questions? Or if he says, well, we're gonna, that is my norm, but if he says, we're gonna cancel school to the end of the school year, and then
Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Let's really look forward to this.
No, 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 exactly, that's why I'm, that's been my concern, is If he says, okay, we didn't do school, so now come back and do. Item 5A U H, okay, and then the Governor says.
Mr. Zani. Yes.
Or if he says, well, we're gonna, that is my norm, but if he says, we're gonna cancel school to the end of the school year, and then
Mr. Spindler.
Yes. Yes, exactly.
Let's really look forward to this.
No, 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 exactly, that's why I'm, that's been my concern, is If he says, okay, we didn't do school, so now come back and do. Item 5A U H, okay. I'll second that. Any discussion? Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
No.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Alright, that passes. Alright, we have 6B, the OFCC Design Development Stage Submission for Etna Elementary. Need a motion to approve a resolution for the DD stage submission and the LFI MOU for Etna Elementary.
Motion approval 6B.
I'll second that.
This is the next stage of the construction project for Etna Elementary. So, we went from SD, now we're DD, from DD, we're gonna go into construction documents. Remember, as part of DD, the board approved about 1.4 million dollars additional money going into the project. That has not changed, there is a chance that if the money, we have said, there's like $300,000 for site locations, that they may be able to move that into kind of the, call it the bricks and sticks of the building, and there's a chance that we'll have, get 300,000 that come back, of that 1.4, so a chance it could save us a little bit of money. Could use a bigger alternate, we can make that choice when the bids come in, but that's still under the, basically, exemption the state has to approve, and they have not approved it yet. They did prove one, basically, one exception was to allow us to put the, some of the HVAC units on the roof at Etna. That's typically not one of the things they allow, they originally denied it, we had a meeting, and they approved it, that did save us money. It's part of that 1.4, but if they would have had to move it to the ground or build a new part of the building, it would have cost more.
Okay.
And we told them, we already put 1.4 in, we don't want to put more, so they did approve that exception, to allow us to do that also. So, I asked the board to approve this, we can keep moving on to the next stage.
Alright, any discussion on that one? Or any questions for Mr. Jones? Alright, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Alright, that motion passes. Item 6C, need AEP right away in easement, we need a motion to approve resolution to authorize the superintendent to, looks like negotiate with AEP for the new buildings.
So much.
Second.
This one was basically a late add, it was been on there, but we were expecting the documents from, from AEP today, we still didn't get it. So, this is for permanent power for the new 4-5 high school, something needs to move real fast, and AEP just kinda dragging their feet. I didn't know, like, if we got them in a week, if we could call a special board meeting, so I reached out to our attorney, I said, can you draft something, a resolution that would basically grant superintendent, myself, board president, the authority to sign any documents related to this AEP, they need to get permanent power to our new building. So, that's what this resolution allows us to do, is any kind of easements or other things, then the board president might design, if not, Ms. Perkins and I can sign the documents, but it allows us to keep moving forward. As soon as we get documents, we can sign them, we can move, because they're, they're really there, at the point where they're kinda waiting on AEP to get stuff in.
Gotcha.
Because everything ran to where they went, ran at, now it's all about waiting on AEP, so, and I think, waiting for another month, or a special would have been the ideal, so, we're asking, again, this, this resolution, as written by a school attorney.
Alright, any questions or discussion? Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
And Engel.
Yes. That motion passes. Item 6D, the motion to approve the general services contact, contract with the Educational Service Center from Lakin County.
I move 6D.
I'll second that. Any discussion or questions?
Contact to approve every year, one year, special, we had another services for, through Lincoln Educational Service Center. So, I ask the board, please approve those.
Any questions? Mr. Jones.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Alright, that motion passes. Item 6E, need a motion to approve the following resolution, and it is the motion to, I believe, close the schools, yes, basically.
Do you want me to talk now about it?
Yeah, well, actually, let's get a motion first, and then you can do that.
Motion to approve 6E. Second.
So, in working with our legal and county superintendents, this motion is, is basically the last paragraph is what's important. It's the board making sure that the superintendent, treasurer have the authority to continue running the school district, maybe in alternative measures, depending on how long we're out, to make sure we have the supplies, whatever we need for our students, the curriculum, working with teachers, and how you choose to do that. So, that's, the last paragraph is kind of the crux of why this is important, so, just supporting us to do our job.
Mrs. Engel, would it be helpful for the recording if we, if maybe you read the last paragraph?
It should be working too, just so you know, now people are texting, it's working.
Oh, good.
And I can, I can absolutely read the last paragraph. We are approving the following resolution, and the last paragraph is, now therefore, the Southwest Looking Local School District Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent and treasurer during the time period that Southwest Looking Local School District's school buildings are closed to students due to COVID-19 to take any and all actions necessary to maintain educational programming for students and provide for the safety of all students and staff, which includes directing students and staff as appropriate, or implementing curriculum as appropriate, purchasing, obtaining, leasing, or otherwise utilizing, and paying for all necessary supplies, services, technology, and equipment necessary for education through alternative means, and complying with orders and guidance issued by the federal and state government and agencies in response to the COVID-19 crisis.
Thank you.
Any questions or discussion? Alright, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. Alright, that passes. Item number seven, we've got treasurer's items.
Okay, if you want to do A through C together.
Yeah, I'll, A through C, yep. Need a motion for those?
Motion approval 7A through C.
Second.
We always appreciate donations, and so, thank you. Again, additional stated purposes that come in throughout to you, and bring for the board. I think we had one there now, certificate, just timing with the, I think it was purchase order for the sheriff, or basically their officer, SOR, SOR officer.
SRO.
SRO, okay. Thank you, ma'am. So, SRO officer, just time, we had to get into it, purchase order opened up, the invoice came in for that, so, I ask the board to approve all three of those, please.
Alright, any questions or discussion?
No, I would just like to note that under the circumstances that we're meeting, and what's going on out in the community with supporting our local businesses, and specifically, our local restaurants, I'd just like to point out here that Puerto Vallarta has donated $250 for high school robotics, so, community, if you're watching, please take note of that, we appreciate that, they're supporting us, so, let's do the right thing.
Alright, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. Alright, those pass. We've got 7D, discussion regarding the post-audit conference.
Really, actually, basically, I wanted to, CFO of the board wanted to have, hold a post-audit conference, actually detached the audit, the letter from the auditor, and basically said, our only finding on the audit was that we didn't convert to GAAP financial statements, and we hadn't been doing that, because it's a waste of money. Nothing else was fined, there, nothing else found, no management letter, nothing, so it was a great audit, everything turned out well.
So, we had no pre-
Nothing this time.
Nothing, wow.
No, no amount mismanagement, no
Funds.
Funds, really, that's
We got it, no, no problem, so. So, just ask, I mean, something like throw it on, I guess, if any, if any of you want to have a post-audit conference, you can. If you don't want to have one, just keep Miss Engel, and I have to sign this letter.
It's all good. I'm good.
I'm good too.
That was an easy one.
Alright. Alright, let's see, 7E, discussion regarding the issuance of certificates of participation.
I put this on there, so now, you know, we were talking about issuing these, and when the board approved the resolution, they approved the 12.5 million, just a really broad, it's like maximum issue. And I told you at the board meetings, that our plan was only to issue 4 million dollars. So, we did additional money that we had thought, if we need in future, some for the high school, middle school renovations, some for Etna, some for, some for Kirkegaard Trail, some for Tass, if we need it. We still are really unsure if we need it for high school, I believe you will, in our first meeting, there's like, they're like at budget, like, $225,000 for kitchen equipment, that's not included in the budget. There's some metal roof repairs, not including the budget, and there's still, there's a lot of paving outside that building. And they have some money in there, they did some core sampling, we don't know the results of the core sampling yet. I just remember when we put that big six-to-one inch pipe through there, that it kept crumbling, and they said that basically, underneath the pavement was bad, so, we'll see what the core sampling comes up or not, so, I believe we're gonna need more money. Our original plan was to issue just the 4 million dollars now, and then possibly the fall, if we need from high school, issue again. Based on the recommendation of municipal advisor, which basically, they feel would be a good idea, basically, the economy is now, the interest rate now is to just do one issuance for the fall and the spring now, it'll save money, we said two separate issuance costs, and the way, we don't know what this rate will be in the fall. So, that would take up to 6 million dollars, for the 4 million for the athletic facility and bleacher replacement, and 2 million for the high school, if we need it, if not, I'm sure, like, we're definitely gonna need it somewhere, way. You know, Etna came in originally 2 million dollars over budget, we still had 1.4, you know, the 4-5 billion came like 2.9 million dollars over budget, so, the 2,000 million dollar number kept coming up, so that's kind of how we used that as kind of a guide. On top of that, basically, we originally talked about issuing, purchasing four school buses, with basically cops, in the original plan, who I met with the municipal advisor, he thought we could use current funds within our permanent levy to do it, and we just looked that way, but some expenses came up, we decided to buy a new box truck, because our other existing one kept breaking down, at the time when outside district it broke down, you had to get towed out. It's in bad shape, so we did purchase new ones from Cobbland. And then the other day, basically, one of the maintenance men come in, says, you know, my van's leaking oil, these are big old spot, and we gotta put that quartet in every week, and he goes, and the frame's cracked.
Oh.
Well, I said, I never heard that, and then talking to our maintenance, our transportation, he goes, it's not cracked, it's just rusted. Supposedly, we have three, like, two vans and a truck, and I guess both vans are in really, really bad shape. Same thing, rusted frames, and truck's not in good, good shape either. So, we've been working with Cobbland to get some quotes to buy, it's called a Ford Transit Connect, it's a smaller van, it's a four-cylinder, better gas mileage, and they had one out here, they looked at it, they thought it was big enough for what we need for a maintenance department, and about 23,000 each. And we're talking about getting three of them, just to replace all three, all three maintenance circles. So, you know, I think it's a good deal, again, we get it from Cobbland, is where the price comes from, we got a couple other competitors, some quotes. Now, this is 2019, Cobbland's on one, seems like, I get 2019 is stopped, 2020 versions, probably about $2,000 more, so.
Are there anything used out on the market?
No, I think that's part of the problem, we buy, we buy a lot of used stuff, and it just seems like, it'd be nice to get these new ones, I think, we're getting below state term contract pricing. Because state term contract's about 24,000, so we think, we feel it's a good, it's worth the extra money, we can still check it out if you want. You just see, that's what we commonly do, is buy used stuff for 30,000 miles or whatever we brought to death, and, but we can look into it, for what we decide, we haven't made the same.
It's also possible the market may be a little bit more flooded with other options when it comes time to buy, in the, just saying, you know.
Well, we're preferring optional, I just want the best value in a vehicle.
Right, absolutely.
So, that's what it comes down to. So, we're looking at every option we had in before, other than that, we're looking at that one, so, and then the box truck. So, with that, we've kind of, you know, if we do buy those vans, either never used, it's gonna use more of that per improvement levy money. So, basically, I've asked them to go ahead and include that into the bond issue, so, originally, it was four buses, about $340,000, and then next year, we'll go buy two more with our normal budget, IBI, which will get the six, that our maintenance advisor requested. So, and then our, municipal advisor has asked us to round up to, to basically 500,000, so. Right now, we're looking at doing 6.5 million dollars, is what the plan is. I know I told you at the board meetings, always four, and I wanted to discuss with you again, to make sure you're comfortable moving forward with the 6.5. We think that lower, better issue, better interest rates right now, lower issuance costs, it's worth it doing it now. And it's well within that, what we need, you know, to keep our, still have some PI money left over, so. Is there any questions, concerns about anything? Just wanted to make sure you're aware of what's, what's going on, and I told you one number, a new number, and we'll make sure you're okay with it, so. If everybody's okay with it, we can move on, that's it.
Alright. Okay.
Okay, so.
Superintendent item.
Couple words, I wanted to address a couple different things with what's happened recently. The first being, you asked John prior, and then we started. So, our meals, we served 752 meals last Tuesday, which equals out to about a little shy of 200 kids that we're actually serving because we gave four meals per kid to get them through the week. I don't know if you, if you saw on Facebook, the meals the cooks prepared, but they, they were so impressive. I mean, they went above and beyond, I feel like, I'm sure our families were really, they were nice, they were very, very nice meals. So, we, we took the extra meals, we prepared for, when we filled out the survey, we had about 600 requested. So we took the extras and gave them to Jerika, who's been working with her through Patasko Community Outreach. So, she was helping to deliver additional meals throughout the community, I saw she put some in the blessing box, so I think that they definitely didn't go to waste. She'll be taking care of the community next week during spring break, and then the school will bounce back in the week after spring break and do our regular Tuesday again, add the four additional stops, and we'll start communicating that next week through constant contact and social media.
What are our stops going to be again?
They're at Carnado Drive, Goodwill, and then Patasko and Kirkersville Elementary. So, kind of target different sides. We did have a few people that reached out, when they were unable to visit a stop, whether it's transportation. So we divided them among our team and just delivered them to their house, so that wasn't a tremendous amount of people. So, most were able to walk and or come to the stop, so. We'll do that again, the Tuesday following, Cindy believes that we'll only be, have to bring in a handful of people to prepare because we're not gonna prepare as many, and she said the cooks are very willing and wanting to come in and help.
Are we preparing at all the buildings, or just at one?
So, prior, we prepared at all the buildings, and then we had the school buses, go, two school buses go around and pick up the meals. I don't know if we'll prepare it all for the next round, we might prepare maybe one or two. I'll have to talk to Cindy about that, and see what she's thinking. I don't, I don't think we'll need to be as far out with our preparations, because we'll be doing less. So, wanted to share that. We gave out over 500 devices. We actually set up again tonight for some that had missed before the board needed to catch people. So I don't know if you saw or heard about that, but that was a well-oiled machine, tech department, excellent job. We will, we're going to watch what happens in the next week, we can have with the governor. If we by chance are gonna have to close school for longer, we will open device pickup back up to our K through two students. Because at that point, we're gonna have to do some additional online components with those kids. So, we're kind of waiting to see what happens, and then we'll decide if we have to go that route. See what else. So, office hours, I've been working daily with the admin team, talking about, you know, kind of what we're doing now, how we're monitoring student learning. ODE has said, they have not given guidance yet, they've just said it could be coming, you know, tracking of student attendance, so we're kind of making sure students are doing their online work. So we're kind of talking about, you know, how could we do that, what would that look like if we get to that point? In addition, we're looking at a lot of what other area schools are doing, you know, having conversations with that. So, if, if, if we go beyond the week after spring break, you know, we'll probably have to start having some more structure to make sure that, you know, we're meeting the needs of all our kids and all of learners. I think right now, we're doing a really good job, but I think if you're talking a few days, then the spring break, and then a week. We start going into an extended amount of time, we have a lot of variables that we don't have answers to yet, ODE. Hopefully we'll provide additional guidance, you know, particularly, I'm worried about high school kids and credits, and that's my biggest. And our early, our early learners who, we really can't afford for them to fall behind with their reading, those are the two, our two most vulnerable populations during this situation. So, I'll keep updating you guys as we go, as to our plans and communication. We have a lot of teachers in buildings that are doing Zoom meetings a couple times a week, whether it's grade level or content. I mean, I'm really impressed with how our teachers have rallied at this time. I think some of our teachers who aren't, who are tech savvy, it's not a big deal, others are coming around, the instructional coaches are offering, offering daily Zoom lessons, like twice a day, to assist them, so I feel like in a short amount of time, we were managed to put together a pretty awesome plan to work with kids. So I feel, I feel really good about that. I have a daily meeting every day on Zoom with all the county superintendents, whoever can log in. That has been highly beneficial because things that I'm thinking of, somebody else is obviously thinking of too, and or advice from legal, or, you know, whatever one's getting, so we keep a daily document log of the conversation if you can't log in. So, we're, there's lots of collaboration going on, which I think is helpful for our district too. We already talked about negotiations, the hiring process, wanted to share that. We're still gonna go forward with hiring. The job fairs that we were going to at the university have obviously been canceled in person, but they're doing online interviews, like using the same platform. So we're gonna go ahead and sign up to continue screening candidates. We'll also be screening for a new assistant principal sooner than later. We're getting tons of applicants for that position as well. So we'll do a lot of that online, and then we'll see where, or, you know, I can't think of the word I'm using, but we'll see where we're at in a couple weeks, and then we'll determine, you know, can we come in in some format like that to meet candidates? I would like to meet people in person before we offer a job. So we'll start the process, so we don't fall behind and lose potential good candidates for teaching jobs, and, you know, for our administration openings. And then, lastly, I'm sure you saw the email that was sent from the architects about the buildings. So, in talking to Bob and Rick, right now, you know, we have a little bit of wiggle room with the four or five opening mid-year and the high school is set to be done in April, so if for some chance we do fall behind and we lose workers, we have a little bit of wiggle room. Rick and I will continue to talk to Bob and make sure, and the architects will make sure we stay up with what's going on and communicate that with you guys. So right now, we're okay. Do you want to add it into that, Rick?
No, there's.
No, but yes.
High school is probably the biggest concern if it falls behind. We have, again, we do have some wiggle room, but if it goes past, well, we can, kids can move in the beginning of school year, and that could be a big problem. Four or five, we have, if we had to move to summer move-in, it's not huge, because there is, if you remember the schedule, nothing happens to the high school, to middle school renovation starts, is completed. Edna's renovation will complete, but it's gonna sit empty for six months, basically, because nothing's gonna happen until the high school. So if we had to move six months back to start summer move-in, they should have it complete in the same time as the high school, middle school renovation. They can all move with one big machine there, so. But I guess, basically, as the high school, new high school falls behind, and we have to, that's gonna delay the high school middle school renovation, which is gonna push everything back, so. So, basically, we're keeping an eye on that, a lot that we don't have control over, but we're just basically planning, keeping, you know, casing and loop. And you, it's board and loop, so you know what's going on.
And then, lastly, I just wanted to share that I put this in the communication, just to maybe ease a few minds, but we're going to, maybe June, maybe July, maybe August, but we're going to have graduation for class 2020. So, whenever we can do that, we owe that class of 2020 graduation ceremony.
Absolutely.
So I would think that none of you would disagree with that.
No, absolutely.
They may not get, you know, the prom and some of the other amazing things, but they're going to graduate.
Thank you.
And that is my COVID-19 update. Do you guys have any questions about anything going on, or anything we're doing, or?
The strategic vision, are we delaying that now?
Well, I, I forgot about that, I talked to Dynamax, it's the company, the other day, and said we would talk about that in court, so. I don't know if you want to wait and see what happens the next week or two with the governor, and then we can make a decision? I mean, they're ready to go.
Probably the best plan.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we can make a decision at that time? You know, I would, I definitely want to do it, I was excited about that, so I think we could see where we're at. I mean, if we can't have a group of people together of that size, so maybe let's see our guidance in the next couple of weeks and then make a decision.
That could be, because I kind of feel, I don't know, I'd like to see us be able to have a group discussion.
Absolutely.
I don't think it would be, I don't think that they would tell you to have it without a group, because I don't think it would be meaningful or effective if, you know, the whole idea is to get input from a myriad stakeholders, so if we can't bring those stakeholders together, I think it would defeat the process. So I think we're gonna have to wait until we can do that for sure.
I also think that any, like, yourself and any other administration or staff involved in this has a lot going on right now. And their priority really needs to be educating the kids, and as much as I was also excited about this, I think it's, it's okay to maybe wait a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
We were originally going to do it, so it's just a matter of when can we do it? We're contracted with the company, and they're willing and able to work with us whenever we can, so.
One of my things, you know, the, the adults I'm talking to are, you know, I'm hearing anxiety and depression and all, you know, all of this, the pressure. I'm sure our kids are feeling that way right now too, and I know that we, you know, all of our buildings have that kids in crisis team, and where they kept their eyes on kids and all of that. And I know that's hard to do when kids are home, and, and now kids are home and away from school, which for a lot of kids is their safe place. Are, is there a way that we can, you know, make sure that we're checking on those kids that we would have been checking on if, if they had been at school, I guess, you know, continue? The guidance counselors, the social workers, the psychologists, the, even the teachers that are on that team, to just make sure that, that we're taking care of those kids, I guess?
I think that before we left, the admins had conversations with the guidance team. I've seen all but one building, which I put an email about that today, communicate with what their guidance team is doing, the communications they put out. They've got a, a Google link where kids need help, need, you know, are in crisis, to reach out, and one of the guidance counselors will reach out to them and make sure they get help. In addition, I feel, I, I saw today, there was a online Zoom thing with the guidance and school psychologist of the high school. And so I think that our teachers and, you know, social emotional team are just as worried about those kids and coming up with different ways that they can meet the needs of them. I know Deputy Brill has offered as well to go to any house in the district any day, to make sure we're checking on kids that maybe we're not hearing from, you know, that's part of the teacher expectation too. If you're not, if your, if your kids aren't doing work, if they're not logging in, if you're not seeing them, we gotta check on what's going on with those kids. So, I do think we have a, a couple of things in place and are moving in the right direction. I think, again, if we have to go to an extended closure, we're probably gonna have to ramp that up a little bit.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay.
Is that raining?
Yes, it is.
But close my window.
He should see my floors. It's like my dog had art class.
Alright, we need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of employment of, of public employees.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Venta?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes, we are in executive session at 7:43 PM. Alright, we are back in session from our executive session at 8:33?
8:38.
8:38, sorry, I can't see that far away. Mr. Jones, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Spindler?
Here.
Mr. Venta?
Here.
Mr. Zani?
Here.
Mrs. Engel?
Here, we have a quorum, we can continue. Need a motion for item number 10, adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Venta?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes, we are adjourned at 8:38.
Watch out, the rain's coming.